Mr. Walker can probably speak to this. There was a time when the BPU and the Sheriff's Department had their own legal counsel. And there was a significant effort to consolidate that for a lot of good reasons. One of the things that I would throw out is if we had, if someone went out and hired an attorney with this money for a legal opinion on an issue that was in contradistinction to the, to our legal opinion, what kind of position does that put us in as a commission in terms of, I think it's one thing to get input on a, on something, it's another thing if we'd actually hire a, a competing opinion or a competing piece that I think is a, you know, if we hire, if someone hired an engineer that said, you know, you could, you could build this road for X number of dollars and Roddy's engineers came back and said, "We can't build it for that." What then would, you know, I, I just want to make sure that if the, I don't want to go back to the days where we had competing legal departments. And I don't know that that's, I don't think that can happen for this amount of money, but I just want to make sure how, how we balance that in terms of professional services with engineers, attorneys, et cetera. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about that?
I would say we get contradictory information all the time. It's just a matter of determining, I had envisioned this being more in terms of someone I would use to prepare an ordinance or, rather than someone, or perhaps someone to do research on a particular subject so I had sufficient information as opposed to actually asking for a formal legal opinion. I could always do that in any event at no cost from the Attorney General. At his convenience, of course, and time.
Yeah, that'll happen anytime.
So, I, I, I didn't, and I have to be honest with you, $10,000 is not going to get you maybe one project a year. I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna put a lot of conflict out there, but if, we have had occasions where it wasn't so much legal opinion that we doubted, it was staff statement of what is, and we are, we were convinced in those instances that we had been given incorrect information. And if the source within the organization, there's a tendency to back up people, as there probably should be, and deal with them outside in the administrative process, I think if we're going to go out on a limb and dispute what a staff member has told us, we should be able to have some independent means to either verify the correctness of that decision or show where the error has been committed. I really don't perceive it as being battling lawyers or anything akin to where the BPU lawyer and the sheriff's lawyer were specifically tasked with obstructing either the city or the unified government in whatever objectives were decided. I mean, yeah, there's always a risk that people disagree, and in the end, we'll have to come down on one side or the other, but we do that every day in planning and zoning decisions, and we do it in a myriad of other ways.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thanks again to the committee that brought these options. I just needed to back up and help me again understand these options apply to what? I know we've talked about a liaison, so put this in a framework for me so I can appreciate the options. The other question is, the $10,000 per commissioner, correct? Is that used limited only to surveys, professional help? Again, can this be used for scholarships, for something other than surveys and that type of thing?
I think, I'll answer your second question first because I still have it on my head. I think we are, we are still in the process of formulating what limitations there would be on that funding. I think part of what we'll probably do is look at what some of these other communities that have those sorts of pots of funding are doing and what sort of language and limitations they're placing on it. But ultimately, we want it to be limited, but not so limited that it keeps us from doing what the whole point of it was, that we would be able to move forward those projects that are on the top of our minds. So, I think, I guess the answer is that's what would take a little more study. So, once we decide we want to move forward, taking a closer look at that, this committee would be hoping to give you a little more detail as time goes on. And then to your first, to your first question, yes, these options apply to that liaison position with the exception of this option one being slightly different in that we would be asking the administrator, who by the way, we haven't talked to about this yet, we would ask the administrator to set aside a little piece of time, basically, of one of his assistant county administrators to handle our communication issues. So, that's where option one is slightly different. It gives this, it kind of takes away the liaison position and instead just allocates a little time from this one employee with the rest of the impetus being on the commissioner to move forward things within their pot of money. The other two options would keep the traditional liaison position and would potentially also come along with this extra pot of money. Does that make sense?
And would this contemplate, I assume that it would contemplate that the liaison position would be restored to a full-time position? Is that right?
Yes.
So, we're contemplating, so option, and this is why this is important now, because the structure for 2B, for instance, what is to be or not to be? Yeah, that's Shakespeare. We would have, if, we need to get this conceptually into the budget because it's a $100,000 line item. And so, we would have, it wouldn't be implemented to 2015 anyway, so we'd have a number of months to come up with a structure that we agreed with, correct? The other piece is, we're looking at an additional half-time. Do you contemplate restoring the administrator to the two administrator positions versus 1.5 as well?
My understanding is that is already in progress.
I just think we need, if we-
Any also?
That to restore, because right now, the commission office is down a full, full-time equivalent. It was three and now it's down to two. There was a liaison and two administrative support people. And now, there's a part-time liaison, a part-time administrative person, and a full-time administrative person. So, part of what I think should happen too is not only should the liaison go back to full-time, which is an additional half FTE, but the administrative assistant that was cut to half-time should go back to full-time. So, you'd be back to three full-time equivalents-
Yes.
-from two. Is that built in?
Tell me if I'm crazy. That is happening, correct?
Okay, so that's, so we just want to be clear that we're asking as a priority for a plus-one FTE here and for $100,000 in program dollars, correct? For, for a study, to the option, right? You need not spend it.
We anticipate there will be some commissioners that spend the $10,000 every year, some that spend $1,000, or some that spend none. I mean, I don't think it'll be, as we saw with the travel dollars, some commissioners are clearly spending more than others, and I think that will continue to be the case.
So, if the commissioners along, let me think of, Leavenworth Road, which goes through four different commission districts, actually five if you count at large, and they wanted a comprehensive study, they could pool their $50,000 for that study?
That is exactly our hope.
Okay. Got it. So, that would be part of the criteria. So, the question is, conceptually, we're looking at a full-time equivalent and $100,000. Is this something the commission would like to push forward for the administrator into the new budget and that we would take the time for the next nine months to flush out fully in terms of how that would work? Commissioner McKernan.
Well, I would have as a high priority restoring that half FTE as a high priority with a goal of seeing if we can move the $100,000 into the budget, understanding that there are competing priorities and we have to allocate it before we can even contemplate spending it. But from my personal opinion, FTE absolutely, the money, push for it, and hope we can get there.
I think that's excellent.
The only difference between, I'm sorry, somebody else.
Commissioner Maddox and then Walker.
Thank you. And maybe I'm not understanding right, but with each commissioner having an additional $10,000 to consult or to use a person to help with a project of one or two, I don't understand why we couldn't just hire two individuals and maybe break it down to $40,000, $50,000 and pay each individual to work with a certain amount of commissioners. If that was the issue, to have somebody who was not attached to City Hall but actually working on the behalf of the commissioners?
I'll refer that question to the committee.
Sure.
Or the spokesperson for the committee.
I know Jim's awfully quiet over here.
I'm right behind you.
So, I think there were sort of two issues addressed in that question. One is that our concern was that we could hire a whole lot of people, but not, not one of those people might actually have the expertise we needed at any given moment. And for an example, I'll use Jim as an example, he is working on this train, what do you call it, train whistle, yeah, quiet zone where the trains can't blow their whistles? So, federal, look, he says I'm saying it all wrong, it's horns, okay? You know, the railroad regulations are very technical, so we could hire someone that's an expert in that area, or we could hire some poor person that knows nothing and expect them to stumble through it and potentially bring us the wrong answers. I think the idea was that with this pool of money, you would hire an expert that was specifically for whatever issue you needed to review. And then I almost, I forgot the other thing I was going to say about your comments. What else did you ask? Oh, about them being separate from City Hall? That's where we had, right now, our charter doesn't allow the commission to hire anyone. So, they have to be hired through the county administrator's office, so that was an additional sort of wrinkle. This option three would allow us, if we decided to change the charter, we could try to do the hiring as a commission, but then the concern is always going to be, you know, how do we all orchestrate that and how does that happen? When, how do you have 10 bosses, basically? So, that's why we offered up those different options in terms of how the person was hired and how it all fit together that way.
Commissioner Walker.
I may be incorrect, but I seem to recall there is an ordinance that permits the commission, certainly if, if there's not an ordinance, it's certainly implicit in the powers. If the whole commission by majority vote wants to commission a study or retain consultants-
Absolutely.
-we can already do that.
That's right.
The difficulty with that is that it requires a formal proposal, public debate, and a vote, in which you may or may not get six or more votes. Under this concept, one commissioner or two or three or four can pool their money on a project of mutual interest, and since the money's authorized, there is no requirement that everyone agree on it. That is the essential difference than what we already have. And under the ordinance or under the general powers of the commission, the study in the past has then been delegated to the administrator who has gone through the proper procurement and handled the study and brought back the results. In this case, this operates independent of the administrator's office. That to me is the difference. So, I would like to see, certainly, if it, if it's an effective tool, we could always revert and change it, eliminate it. If it's not used properly or if it's not used at all, sitting here right now, I can't imagine what I'm going to use mine for, but there may come a question that I feel needs to be independently investigated, and I want that answer before I submit it to staff. I may want to know just so I don't make a mistake or a foolish remark. I gave you an opening there, Mayor.
I plead the fifth. Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. So, let me recap what my understanding of this is today, because I was feeling like somebody who looked in their pocket and found $10 that you didn't know you had. So, this $10,000 per commissioner would be something we would have to give direction to the administrator to find somewhere or not. We currently do not have this.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's another budgeting decision we would have to make.
That's right.
I like what I'm hearing about its use, but I went from here to there when I realized that, you know, didn't have it.
This money is not sitting around-
Yeah.
-waiting to be spent.
I thought it was just, you know, $5 in the pocket that was going to the cleaners, but it's not. Okay. The second thing I wanted clarification on one more time is proposal, option 2A and/or 2B include what in terms of staffing? And are you talking about taking people who are already on the payroll and reassigning them or adding again to the budget to finance new hires from the outside?
I think, so currently, we have one full-time and one part-time assistant in our office, so already in the works due to some staffing changes in the administrator's office is my understanding that we will end up with two full-time assistants. So, we're going to add 0.5 of a person. And then, in addition to that, the liaison position is a, will be, will be a full-time position. Right now, Emmerich is sort of wearing multiple hats, so we will have a full-time liaison position. Then, in terms of whether it's reassigning or how that looks, I think that will be up to the will of the commission, but we can either reopen for applications and take new applications in, or we can choose some other way to deal with that.
Well, and I think the administrator, if we, if we give direction to the administrator that we want an additional full-time equivalent than what's currently now and the $100,000, then the administrator comes back and says, "I'm going to give you that full-time equivalent, whether it comes from another department or not," you know, it could be a reduction in another department. It doesn't necessarily mean we need to add money to the budget. It does mean that the administrator's given direction to prioritize that full-time equivalent in this office. And so, I think that's, it doesn't necessarily mean it increases the budget, it just means it's a movement from one department to another potentially. Commissioner Walker.
I guess what we should do is move this forward as a priority and throw it into the basket. I mean, at the end of the day this summer, I will be very surprised if we don't have to look at some of these things we've advanced as priorities and say, "We got, we got to delay it or we got to cut it." But where we sit here right now in March, this is a, this, for me, is a priority. I want to see it advanced. I'll let you worry about where the money's going to come from, and at some point, we'll have to worry with you.
That's right.
And if we can't make it happen, we can't make it happen, and we'll have to start shaving the budget in order to make it work. But as an idea, as something to strive for, I would say, I don't know, has there been a motion made?
I don't think we need a motion. I think there's consensus to move it forward.
There's consensus to move this forward, and we can always cut it at the end if it turns out to be impractical.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Thank you. I'm so happy everybody else agrees with me. I knew you'd like that. He's like, "What? I let everybody else talk. It's easier that way." Because you guys are so intelligent. I really do appreciate the hard work that you guys did on this and coming up with the different options. And I truly believe that, yes, we need both assistants and we need that full-time person to help us. And again, I say, I utilize, I utilize that, that wonderful helper called the liaison, and I worked their little feet off, and it doesn't matter who's doing the job. And the young man that's filling in for, for our liaison this week has been doing a great job for me, and I really do appreciate that. So, yes, 100% and plus 10, I want to go forward with this.
Okay, now, I've also heard the most discussion about two, one, option two. Is there, is that, that's what I've heard the most about? Does anyone want to speak up for one or three? Or do we just want to contemplate two at this point?
2A with 2B in the back burner.
Okay. It is, we've got it? Thank you. Okay, we now have a memorandum that's just been passed out for the third topic, which is county fair. Commissioner Walker.
I did not copy again the memorandum that you've all had for the last couple of days. I will presume you've read it. If you hadn't, then I would hope you will. I, there was also attached to that a financial history of the Wyandotte County Fair Association since 1995, which showed varying amounts of money that were received. There was also a memo, I believe, that you might have received. If not, you have the more complete version here, here from Lou Levin of what other counties As I said, there has been a county fair continuously in this county since 1863. In 1954, and thanks to the ubiquitous Kenny Moore, I was able to receive from him a copy of the Kansason of November 3, 1954, in which there was a vote on a special session which authorized the commissioners to levy not to exceed 3/10 of a mill annually to erect and maintain county fair buildings. It was basically three to two. $27,000 in favor, 18 opposed. At that time, the levy amounted to $45,000 a year in 1954. I could only speculate what that would be today. What we're here to talk about is the situation of the existing fairgrounds and the future. I will be, in summary fashion, try to, for the benefit of those in the audience and those watching, the Wyandotte County Fairgrounds at 98th and State Avenue was an operating entity that every year had a fair. Throughout the year, they had various activities depending on, perhaps it was a political fundraiser, they had barbecue contests, they had some kind of balloon or airplane contest at one time. They've had livestock sales, rodeos, various things in the milieu of what you would refer to, I suppose, as country western or with that flavor. It has a longstanding relationship with the Kansas State Extension and research, in particular, the 4H Clubs, which have, over the years, as this county has evolved into an urban, more urban county with less farmers, to some degree, changed direction. They are very much involved in, in healthy food through the extension. Many of our 4Hers participate in the various food competitions, that is, you know, growing of things. Small animals are still large, as you might expect, cattle and lambs, and have not had the same participation level as they did in years past. But they do have more than just the traditional fair activities. They have had other kinds of entertainment, music, other events associated with the fair. Now, we, we moved them, that is, yours and my predecessors moved them off of that ground, whether it was compelled or induced or lured or whatever the correct term might be, they were forced to leave a facility which was upright and paid for. They had no debt. They got approximately $177,000 a year, and that might be, that's a general number. It might be a little higher than that one year, a little lower, depending on what the particular mill levy gained them and what was approved. State law also requires that we pay for premiums, that's what the statute calls it, but it is really prize money. And that varies each year as well. So, you have the numbers that Mr. Levin provided you with, and I will assume, knowing Lou, those are accurate to the penny. Where we're at today is, is that beginning in, it was in 2007 or 2008, when were they forced to vacate for Schlitterbaum? It was somewhere-
Seven.
Seven. Beginning in 2007, for four years, the fair was held at two alternative sites, at the Woodlands two years and then twice in Tonganoxie, returning to the current site at K-7 and Pulford Road in 2011. Back in 2008, and I, Lou, you have the numbers, I'm sure, we began diminished funding of the fair. In part, I think that was justified at that time because we were not at a facility, we didn't have a facility that had lights on and was operating 365. We paid them 4.6 million as in four in satisfaction of their facilities at 98th and State. The land was bought for slightly more than $2.2 million, I believe. I mean, it might be a little bit more than that, but that's, and it was deeded to the Wyandotte County Fair Foundation or the Wyandotte, yeah, it's a foundation and it owns the ground and then has a long-term lease with the Fair Association. The plan was for them to build the facilities. There are differences in opinion as to whether the 4.2 million was going to be sufficient to completely rebuild as they had at the other site, but staff contends to me that that was what they understood. I have not heard that from the Fair Association, and in part, it's because of infrastructure and environmental cost. I know that they had spent $300,000 on a drainage ditch, retention pond, and then, when the work was done, the grading was done, they had to fill that in, and that cost them $300,000 for nothing. But they were required to do it. They got 109 acres. Half of that is unusable. It cannot be developed without extensive environmental remediation or compensation, the forested area to the north essentially. At the same time, we acquired an additional 60 acres to the west of the fairgrounds, basically 169 acres. At one time, the National Guard Armory was going to be put in the, put on the 60 acres, but that, that did not materialize. The land is vacant and is, as of last week, I have not been, no one was aware of any, any particular development that was interested in that site, other than the Fair Association. Now, what you have is a proposal by the Fair Association, one, to restore their funding for calendar year 2014 to the amount that had previously been funded, which is approximately an additional $100,000. And then, for fiscal years 2015 through 2019, the amount of $250,000 per year, which I would point out is still below the authorized mill levy. Never in the 60-plus years of the fair's operation have they received a full 3/10 of a mill for funding. The purpose of that money is twofold. One, they also have requested the issuance of 1.724, $1,724,000 for revenue bonds to finish the build-out of the-
Sorry, I'm just trying to cut down some chat.
No. Finish out the build-out of the, the project, which would, which would include climatizing or climate control of the event barn. They wish to build a trap shoot- They wish to build a trap shoot target range as a revenue producer. They also wish to lease the 60 acres from us that they currently use part of for parking when they have the fair anyway. But the idea would be to build an RV park to capture surprisingly short-term assigned military to Fort Leavenworth. Apparently up the road on K-7, there is an RV park that is full year-round with predominantly military personnel that are here for a training session of some sort or another. The committee met, we've met twice with the representatives of the board. We believe that there has been a, and I want to point out, and it's stated in the MOU, or in the document that I prepared, we did enter into an MOU. And among the other things in that MOU, we agreed to the, agreed to the possibility, or agreed to consider the possibility of issuing revenue bonds. So we knew, when we entered into that MOU, that additional funding was going to be necessary for the fair. That's my contention, and that we would consider issuing revenue bonds at some future date when that became necessary. I think you have to view that document as a statement of, made, a reasonable statement made in good faith. Otherwise, then we clearly misled them if we had no intention of ever considering it, and considering it in good faith. You have before you what some other fairgrounds do. I think what you're going to find in Kansas, I maybe have already said this, if I have, I'm, you know, getting of an age where you'll have to indulge me repeating myself. You'll find most counties in the state of Kansas have a fair. But they do it for five days, and it's either on a fairground or on a park ground, and when it's done, there is no further year-round use. This is contemplated to be a year-round facility, especially with an event barn for weddings, political gatherings, for whatever purpose an event would be held. And also, it has, with the Phase 2 improvements, the ability to provide full services. Now, one important feature of this deal, you might ask, why are we doing this? Well, in exchange for a lease of that west 60, give or take, acres, they have agreed that we can have, what's, I've not heard this expression before, a pocket park on their grounds that will have playground facilities. It also will have a walking trail on the outside of the facilities that will allow you to exercise, and this would be the first and only park, I'm given to believe, from a Piper resident I know that is in Piper. That would be our facility, somewhat as consideration for the use of the other 60 acres. Now, I'm going to say one final thing about that 60 acres. At 60 acres, the only access is going to be off of Pulford Road. Now, for those of you that are familiar with that, K-7 runs along there, but there's no access to, and there will be no access granted by the state off of K-7 to that property. So to get to our property now, you have to come down Pulford, and you have to put the entrance as far east as you possibly can, because in times of heavy usage, you have a stacking problem of vehicles trying to get in and get out. And the state will require that you put that entrance practically to the entrance of the fairgrounds, for us to access the 60 acres for something else. Also, the front part of that 60 acres that is adjacent to Pulford Road is not for, cannot be used, because it is in the long-term projections for the interchange improvements on K-7 that KDOT has adopted. So that will not be available for an access point. So that, the committee consisted of myself, Commissioner Philbrook, Mr. Kane. Do either of you have comments you wish to add? Yes, okay.
Commissioner Philbrook.
This looks like a daunting project, and it is. There is no question about it, because it's very complicated, and over the years, it's been more complicated by the fair people not having any place to roost. Okay? And our community has been very supportive of a fair for a long time. I will also say that I've been speaking with some folks in 4-H who have expressed the fact that their intentions are to expand a lot of their activities into the urban core, because they realize that there's a lot of things they can do with children, that they don't have to have a goat to raise. They can be part of a gardening community, they can be part of, just raise their own plant, you know, just do anything that would help give them a feeling of accomplishment. And they can be part of that, and that's one of the places they can come to. So we need a place where a lot of kids can come and show what they can do for themselves. It's very amazing what 4-H and that sort of thing can do for children in their self-esteem. That's one reason that I'm very in favor of the fairgrounds. The other thing is, is that we have started being a community that is a destination community. And why not take that out to the fairgrounds and have things, competitions, that are national competitions, like rifling, and, oh my gosh, there's a list of them, a mile long. Somebody help me a little bit. Yeah, BB guns. Thank you, thank you, thank you. See, there he goes, he knows all of this. And, you know, and these are things where we can bring other people's money to our community, okay? And they will also utilize that... All right, guys, quit making fun of the old lady.
No, we're not making fun of you. Mayor looks at me, and I know he had one, but he's held back. He showed his shirt.
I'm listening, Mayor.
No, for, no, no, no.
Okay. So, thanks, guys. It's, like I said, it's a daunting project, but I think that as community leaders, we have to give folks something to have dreams to and be part of. So our kids will have things that will make them feel better about themselves, and it'll give us, it'll give us an opportunity to give guidance to children that don't have as much guidance as they need right now, you know, and get to them and help them. And so, like Boys and Girls Club, that sort of thing. So that's my opinion, that's one of the many reasons why I want to have the fair. But I want it to be self-sustaining, so I want it to do all these other things and bring other people's money in, so we're not having to support it as much as we would have.
Commissioner Kane.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I wasn't born in 1954, but the people voted on it, and the fair never really got what they were intended to get. And I can't even remember who was on the commission at the time that, when Schlitterbaum came in here, and we're all, went Gugu Gagu over, okay, they got a place, and we worked with the fair, and we said, we're going to move you. So we moved, and in good faith, they think everything's going to work out, and then we had to crash, and it didn't work out. But not too long ago, Commissioner McKernan and the mayor and I met some urban core 4-H This is something that can be used by the entire county, by the entire city. It's something that is used by the folks. If I was one of the folk, and we had a mishap here a couple of years ago, when something about the 4-H group filled this office or this area right here on a misunderstanding, there's no misunderstanding, the fair's never really got what they were supposed to get, and it's painful to give them some of it. We do not have a park in Piper. We only have, the closest thing to us is Wyandotte County Lake, so, and in the other districts, there's three or four parks just right down the street from each other. You know, so that's kind of nice. They want to have the world championship trap shoot in Wyandotte County. And in fact, we have the second best world shooter in trap, which is Don Bud. This thing will generate money year-round. It was generating money year-round. And then we thought we had something going to come in and take it, and by gosh, you know, it's going to make it work, and it didn't. I think it's time to right the ship. There were some things that happened that were under our control and some that wasn't. We certainly have an obligation to the kids in all four corners of the community, and not just the west side, or the east side, the north side, the south side, but everybody. And I think this is a golden opportunity to show our kids that fair is huge, and to watch those kids bring a rabbit up, or bring a chicken up, and show off what they've done for the year, is just as good as any sporting event you've ever seen. And it means just as much to those kids as it does scoring a touchdown or hitting a home run. So maybe we don't owe it to the adults, we just owe it to the kids.
Yeah, I'll remind us, we have 15 more minutes for this special session. Commissioner McKernan. I don't know why I said that just before Commissioner McKernan spoke, but it occurred to me.
Gosh, I don't know either. Could it be because this is my sixth time talking tonight?
No, no, I'm not counting.
No, not that. So as we think about, how do we possibly stabilize it now, get through a tough period, set the stage for future growth? And so, these are just some thoughts, and I know I've gotten a report on this, and I apologize, I probably haven't remembered, but have we done kind of like that direct and indirect revenue assessment of fair operation like we did for Community America, where we can share with each other and kind of get a feel for the scope of revenue generated, both directly and indirectly, based on fair events? And if we have it, I don't remember it, and I don't even know if it's possible to do it, but it might help frame the magnitude of the revenue that we're looking at here, and give us a better appreciation for what it is we're pushing for. And so, I've just, that's my first thought. We could issue the revenue bonds, they don't add to our debt load, because we don't back them, the fair backs the revenue bonds, right? But we issue them, is that correct? And when were those revenue bonds anticipated to be issued? Next year?
The idea behind the revenue bonds is that we would raise the amount of money, starting in 15 to 250,000 a year. That plus their revenue would pay for the revenue bond debt. The bonds would probably have to be issued sometime in summer, with the idea being that the first payment would not fall due until sometime in 2015, so that they would have revenue to pay the bond debt.
Okay, so some of that 250 is to go against the revenue bond?
Correct. It is only for a five-year period, or five fiscal years, at which at the end of that, it reverts back to whatever we determine, based on whatever their financials would show they're capable of. You know, if they're extremely successful with their trap shoot and their RV park, it is highly possible that we would lower the level, but it could well be that after that point, it would be somewhere in the 170, 180,000.
Just thinking out loud, is it possible to restructure the payoff on those revenue bonds such that they could be, over a longer period of time, which would then lead to a lower annual expectation?
Is there anyone in the House who knows the answer to that kind of financial question?
We ran some numbers at the request of Commissioner Walker, for approximately debt financing, 1,750,000, and ranging from a 10-year term to a 20-year term. A 20-year term, approximately 125,000 per year would be the debt service on it. The revenue bonds would actually be issued under the authority of our Public Building Commission. In terms of timeframe, we could issue the bonds, or we could agree to issue the debt, so the money would be available early 2015. And we actually could accelerate that, if that was the intent of the commission, but initial debt service would really not occur until 12 months after the fact, after we've issued the debt.
Well, it would certainly seem to me that if we did it over a longer period of time, lowered the annual expectation of repayment, with the option that should things go better than expected, we can accelerate and pay that off early, then that might allow us to get those in place, get the fair improvements in place, lower our annual cash required against that, and potentially make it more feasible that we could work all of those pieces into the budget. And I just had one last question, the Fair Association is a 501(c)(3)?
It is.
And so, I just wonder if we have maximized our ability to raise private funds to supplement, and possibly, again, accelerate the payoff of the revenue bonds?
You know, I am not aware of us having an history of attempting to, us being a unified government, and I, the staff, trying to raise, I think they may have developed some private funds with different companies, but I can't answer the question.
Well, I just think that that's one, again, as we look at revenue sources, I think that's one thing that we should consider, because that's a potential revenue source. There could be private donors who would be willing to show their support of the fair, and maybe just aren't aware of, or haven't had the opportunity to do that. So all of those things together might get us to a point where we can stabilize it now and set the stage for the future.
In reply, do they have projected, sorry, they have projected sponsorship for various bands for trap shooting at various levels up to, you know, platinum sponsor, they've got names for them, and various other forms of sponsorship that they are actively going to recruit, but how that plays into the overall, I mean, I simply, the idea would be that we would expect staff to develop with them the most austere way of financing what they're after over a long period of time, and whatever type of bonding is best suited for this, that they would utilize whatever is necessary.
10 minutes, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. Someone was trying to call me and tell me what to say. I simply just wanted to ask, how many yearly attendees are there for the fair? Is there a number?
There is, and I'm afraid that, Commissioner, I do not have that.
Okay.
The last five years of the fair would not be a fair representation, due to the somewhat unorthodox ways in which the fair was required to be put on.
Okay.
I think the attendance was fairly large prior to, from 2007 and before. The times I've been there, there have always been a lot of people.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to know, and I know at some point, I guess, we will have to look at the $250,000 in regards to the budget, so I just was asking that for...
We will have that information for you, and the rest of the commissioners, before we finalize any plans on this.
Commissioner Markley.
I'll try to be very quick. You know, Brian and I went through that whole notebook, and there were all kinds of great ideas in there, and so for me, the hard part when we're going through budget is to look at those really great ideas, and you sort of have the emotional side of you that says, that's a great idea, I really want to fund it, but we've been very strict with ourselves as a commission, in that we want to fund the highest priorities of our constituents, and we want to fund the priorities that are going to move us toward our strategic plan goals. So my concern with this funding, and like I said, I can keep it very brief, my concern is, I don't see anything in our survey that indicates... is I don't see anything in our survey that indicates that this would be a high priority for constituents. I am sad we didn't ask this particular question, so we should remember this in our next round of survey to ask as one of our county questions. But I don't see anything in the results that would indicate that the county fair would be a high priority. And I don't see anything in our strategic plan that would necessarily indicate that this would be a high priority. So my question is, are we just making an exception to our rule? And if we continue to make exceptions to our rule that we want to fund our highest constituent and strategic plan priorities, how are we ever going to reach our goals?
Commissioner Philbrook.
I'm going to ask your questions anecdotally. I've been parking cars for the fair for eh long. And I will tell you that it's been very busy and it's been out clear too. There are times when it's clear out to Seven Highway and down Seven Highway, okay, for people coming in. Only if you want to help us raise money, okay, come out and help Quanis raise money. But it's been very busy. And so, I don't have the numbers, but I know I was so busy, you know, and there's a lot of people working out there. So it was very busy, okay? And a lot of people from all over, Johnson County up north, you know, Wyandotte County, they come from all over the place.
Commissioner King.
Well, it wasn't on the questionnaire. And when I was asking, when we were talking about that, out in the 5th district, the fair is as big as anything that Turner has or what any of the other commissioners have. You know, and Mayor Holland was here one day when all the 4-H people filled this entire room over something. So it's hugely important out there. And the reason I asked those questions about the survey, that would have been on there and you'd have said in your area, but it wasn't on there. Because they have been by themselves, the 4-H and the fair people are like a stepchild. And if the importance, if you want to see the importance, I'd imagine we can contact those 4-H people and we can show you the importance. And this goes back into, this has been something that's been there forever. I took my wife there 39 years ago and we still go to the fair. And maybe it's not important in some areas, but this is hugely important in District 5. And I don't like to get territorial, but I guess I'm going to on this one. Everybody wants a piece of the pie. These guys have had their pie stolen from them, all they want is their piece of the pie.
Commissioner Walker.
Well, you beat me to the punch because the survey, I was going to say, the survey didn't ask the question. And secondly, the difference between this project and some of the other requests for funding is, first of all, it's not new. New funding. It's not some project that somebody's got a good idea about that all they need is a little startup money and they're going to go down the road and everything's going to be fine. This is like we've built half a bridge and we're just sitting here doing nothing about finishing the bridge. And so, we've got money invested. Now, the question is, do we invest the rest of the money to make this thing succeed or do we just let it sit here? And I've heard it said, well, we'll wait till 2017, which it would appear we're going to be waiting on a lot of things till 2017. And then we're going to have the money. And I suspect that in my head, I could add up at least twice the amount of money that we anticipate receiving that has already been spent in the various commissioners' minds. Maybe five times?
Five times.
So, that's why I think you finish something, you started. You may have not been here, I was on staff, Doug was on staff.
You were on staff in 1954?
No. Well, some people would think so. But I tell you, and I tell you this with all sincerity, I'm not pitching this, those people were led to believe with the Fair Association that they were going to be funded properly to rebuild a modern fairground facility at that new location. And that has not happened. Now, maybe we need to examine how they spent the money, but I'm confident that from what I've seen, they didn't spend it on trips to, you know, other fairgrounds in other parts of the country. So, to me, this is a job we need to finish. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. I've read the submissions that Commissioner Walker and the other committee members had prepared and it was enlightening to me from the background. I had been to the fair before, but it's been a while. One of the things I want to continue to evaluate is whether or not, well, it seems to me that there was some type of, I don't want to say injustice, but expectations about and obligations what was supposed to happen and may not have for a variety of reasons. I guess my analysis will boil down to what can we reasonably and feasibly do now? That's the issue for me. With regard to the survey or not, the fair is a big thing. And I would think that people would answer all of the survey questions with regard to parks or whatever the issues were with the knowledge that that does exist. But for me, it's maybe what can or can't we do right now? Not if we should at all, but what we can fiscally and responsibly do now. And that's for things that I may want to navigate or, you know, anywhere else, anyone else.
Thank you. Commissioner Philbrook.
I would tell you that in the back of my mind, the question where parks comes in on county services, I think that a lot of people consider the fair part of park system, they don't know, okay? When I read it, you know, it's like, I would like to have my fair, you know, it's part of the parks in my mind. It's part of something that gives people a chance to get out and do something else and it's an outside activity. So I would tell you, I don't think it was totally forgotten, I think it was kind of subliminal a little bit in the park situation. That's in my mind, thank you.
Commissioner Walters.
Children and rabbits and goats and all that stuff. And I do. And we all remember the fair, you know, and some of us remember participating in the fair. And I think a lot of people think of the fair as, you know, a four or six-day-long activity in August. But it sounds like the fair is moving in a completely different direction now. And that may be a good thing for them to do. I do agree, as House said, we're not the rural county that we were 50 years ago or 60 years ago. So times change and we probably need to change with them. But it sounds like the fair is asking us to become kind of a major partner to the fairgrounds, particularly a financial partner. And I don't know where they came up with 4.6 million or whatever the figure was to relocate to the new property, but evidently it wasn't enough money. And now they want, you know, us to help them get some more. There are a lot of questions of this, this is a kind of a big issue to kind of understand in 15 or 30 minutes. So I hope that in the months ahead, we can get a lot more detail and maybe staff can help vet some of the information so that we can make good use of taxpayers' money as we, you know, continue to evaluate whether, you know, what direction we want to go with the fair. Thank you.
Commissioner McKeonan.
Well, in light of the fact that we are just about 30 seconds away from wrapping it up, would it be saved? To me, it seems like the fair is a priority. Or at least, we want to approach it and ask the question, what could we do this year that would at the least stabilize it and at the best move it forward this year? So could that be the direction we give staff at this point in time is, come up with the plan that you think is the best plan for now to at least stabilize and at best move forward now? And maybe lay out some options for future years, how it might unfold, how we can continue to move the fair forward?
And I think we can give that direction. The other question I have, they currently receive $77,000 a year from the UG. They want, and I just want to make the, understand the request, do they want an additional 250,000 or do they want an additional 173,000 to get to 250,000?
Well, what the committee recommended, because the additional money would not accrue as needed. They need another 100,000.
I need your microphone.
They need another 100,000 for fiscal year 2014, premised on the belief that the revenue bonds' first payment would not come due until 2015. In 2015, we would give them 250,000 for 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. After that, we would revert to the most being what our current mill levy, the 180,000, and based on what their revenue has been and their level of success, we could perhaps reduce it further.
Okay, I want to clarify though, do they need $250,000 each of those years just for the 1.25 million, the 250,000 over five years?
To operate the fair and to pay the bond debt.
Okay, so that's...
Guarantee the bond debt would be paid for those five years. They are willing to guarantee the bond debt after those five years without the additional money.
So it would be an additional 173,000 because they already get 77,000?
Right, for...
From a budgeting perspective, I'm just trying to get information.
For 2015, they are asking for an additional 100,000.
In this fiscal year?
In this fiscal year.
Okay. So it's a 173,000 ask, starting next year for the next five years, in addition to what's already on the books?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. So, just to see if there's consensus, is there consensus to ask the county administrator to look into this as one of our priority areas? Okay, here's what I think. I think if there's several people who would like that, we're not voting on the budget today. So if we're going to ask them to put it forward and to look at it, I think we can ask them to do that. And then when it comes budget time and we're looking, then it, I mean, everything we're suggesting is on the table, right? We're just asking the administrator to look into it. Yeah, so I think what we're asking for is a special session on the county fair to get a more comprehensive look at the county fair itself. Is that fair? Is that fair? Get it? Fair? Fairgrounds? All right, well, I'm here all week.
We get it.
Okay. We have a couple of more items. Commissioner Townsend, you're good. Okay. So we have some direction with the fair. Thank you to that group for looking into that. I think it's, your report is well-received and I think there's certainly a live discussion in terms of how we move this forward. A couple of things that are also on this sheet that I want to emphasize, and we're, for those of you who are here for our 7 o'clock, this is our 5 o'clock continuing. The 7 o'clock will be starting momentarily. But I want to wrap up a few things on our 5 o'clock, we're looking at budget priorities. I think the data or innovations piece, if we're going to save additional money moving forward, I think we need to find, we need to look at the funding of that position. I think that's, it's the kind of thing where you spend money to get money. If we're going to make data-driven decisions and we don't have any infrastructure to get data, I think we need to look at, ask the administrator to look at funding this role.
I was going to say, can we explore that in conjunction with other entities? Because I'm wondering if maybe like BPU, for instance, is having similar discussions or would have a similar need? We're all talking about open data and yada, yada, yada all the time, maybe that's a possibility. I'm just throwing it out there.
I think that's, I think that's an excellent idea. We just had a joint BPU meeting today with Commissioners McKeonan and Walker and myself to talk about some options. And we have, we're going to get a report next quarter on other opportunities for collaboration that I think this could be one as well. So I think the data and innovations officer, is there anyone opposed to pushing that forward into looking at that option? All right. The other piece is the classification and compensation studies and the review of public safety functions. I've heard clearly from the commission in our previous statements that those are studies we want to move forward. Is there any disagreement in terms of moving those forward? I think we've got to study those departments. Yes.
There we go. There's no disagreement from me at all. One of the things that we had talked about in a special session about a month and a half ago was the jail study that we had recommended be done. And I know that here I'm talking about a couple more dollars in a budget that's already stretched. But if we don't fund the study until 2015, we don't get the results until 16, we can't implement them until 17, I think we've pushed any possible remedies a long way down the road. So if there were any way possible to move that study into 2014 amended, I think we could potentially, at worst, solve some problems and at best, solve some problems and save some money.
I, from what I understand, each of these studies is about $200,000, police, fire, and sheriff. I believe, I think it probably would be. I think that, here's an issue that we also talked about in our strategic plan. Public safety is currently spending about $5 million a year in overtime. I believe we're going to receive a report at the end of April from the sheriff and the two chiefs to talk about a plan for overtime. I think there's overtime savings in this fiscal year that can fund all three of these studies. That's my belief. And I would just offer that challenge to the administrator and to those departments. When we, when you have 1.2 million, 1.5 million, and 2.5 million in overtime costs alone in each of those departments, I think there's $200,000 there in this fiscal year to get these studies done to help us identify ways to further drive those numbers down. So I think there's ways to do this within this fiscal year. And I think that employee classification and compensation study needs to happen this year also. Because we keep pushing everything off, I agree with you, if we don't study them until 15, we don't get the results until 16, we're not implementing until 17, I don't think we can wait that long for these kinds of savings. I think all of these studies that are listed in here, I think, need to be priorities. And I think they need to be pushed forward in this fiscal year. And I think they can be done without increasing our budget, but looking at some savings across the board. So if there's, is there any disagreement on that in terms of moving these studies forward? Okay. The other thing I want to see is, I think customer service and communications are huge. And I think that we need to see in this budget some steps taken. I don't know that they need to be big dollar amounts, but I think we can take steps with customer service and communications without spending a lot more money, but I think we need to prioritize those. Commissioner Markley, are you still wanting to speak? Okay. Commissioner McKeonan?
Well, and then I'm going to go here to the survey priorities, top three, or top three priorities. Under city services, maintenance of city streets, I would emphasize, I believe that we all agree that's a priority, an expensive priority, but a priority, let's see what we can do. And then under county services, motor vehicle registration, we're going to hear a presentation about this tonight, but we interact with more citizens, I would venture, in that office than in any other office of the entire UG. And so I personally would say that that's a top priority for doing what we can, whether it be personnel, equipment, or otherwise, to try to improve the efficiency of that office.
All right. We have covered all the topics here, are there any other topics for priorities? Administrator Bach, are you ready?
Yeah, I didn't know if you want to talk about the stuff below the blue line anywhere, but...
I think those have to be on the table. I think we need, I think everything's on the table, we've heard our priorities and we need to look at the, look at the money, the revenues that are available.
Yeah, the reality is, we have to. I mean, if that's where we're going, jumping into all those different areas, I have to be there because...
And I want to, I want to put in another plug for our fund balance as a high priority. If we lose our credit rating, our ability to do CMIP projects gets reduced because we have to pay more interest. And so, I think that fund balance has to be pushed forward. And I know that's not a paid advertisement by Lou Levin, but that's just a reality that we have to push forward our fund balance into an acceptable range. All right. I think we've given the direction. We've given you the impossible task. Wave your magic wand and make it work. I want to thank again the commission. We are, we're literally months ahead of where we've ever been in terms of pushing this forward. Thanks to everyone who's been a part of that. We are now going to take, we're going to end this special session, we're going to take a 10-minute break, which will allow the clerk to finalize the recording of this and to reset the recording device. And then we will be, we'll be back here at 7:20. I want to thank everyone who's here for the 7 o'clock for your patience. I want to thank everyone who's here for the seven o'clock for your patience.